Hi there. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions on how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Seeing that there is no one here in the boardroom, Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Seeing that there are none, the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn into closed session. We will see you at 7:00 PM. We are reconvening to open session at 7:14. I apologize for the delay. Good evening and welcome, everyone. My name is Robin Jankowicz, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person, finally, here in the boardroom. I know, cheers to all of you. So nice to see people. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Isidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. May we have one of the interpreters translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas noches. La reunión de esta noche tiene servicios de interpretación simultánea en español y en inglés. Para acceder a los servicios de interpretación, en breves momentos ustedes van a ver en la parte de abajo de su pantalla de Zoom un icono del globo terráqueo. Ahí pueden hacer clic y entonces escoger el idioma Spanish o español. Si ustedes están en un teléfono móvil, van a ver tres puntitos en su pantalla de Zoom en la parte de arriba y dice more o más. Pueden hacer clic allí para encontrar los servicios de interpretación al español. Gracias. If there is anyone in the audience that speaks in Spanish, we can also translate simultaneously into English. So at that point, feel free to join the interpretation channel, choose English, and you would hear simultaneous interpretation. Thank you.
I do have a statement to read from former trustee Jason Dooley dated May 23rd. It is with very mixed emotions that I resign my position as a trustee on the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. I must resign to ensure that I in the district avoid any conflict of interest relating to my wife Laura's pursuit in the career of teaching. Government Code Section 1090 prohibits prohibits the board and its members from making a contract that would financially benefit one of its members. That includes contracts for employment for spouses. My wife intends to apply for and hopes to obtain a position as a special education teacher in the district. And any action by the district toward hiring her should be, should she be selected, could be considered making a contract and would be attributable to me and the board. It is a conflict that can only be avoided by my resignation from the board. I am immensely excited for Laura as she embarks on a career that she is passionate about and that she will be great at. Laura supported me through law school and a difficult job search during a recession, and I can do nothing but be there for her and not be a barrier for her as she pursues her career. I know she will have a deeper impact on students for many years to come than I can hope to have on the board. There has been no question in my mind that this is the right thing for me to do for Laura and for my family. Nothing less than would, nothing less than that would take me away from the great work that the district is doing and that I have had the pleasure of being a part of these last couple of years. This governance team and the administration worked tirelessly to improve the quality of education in the Napa Valley Unified School District. We are headed in a great direction, and I am proud of the part that I played in that. I know that this governance team will continue with the unity of purpose that has driven our decisions since I joined the board. I am disappointed that I will not be able to fulfill my term as a trustee, but I am not going away. I plan to continue to be involved in any way that I can, and as I have said before, I am on the volunteer list now. I also know that it is difficult for a group of people to do such hard work and make such difficult decisions without developing camaraderie and friendship. I am grateful for the relationships we have developed as a team and will continue to watch the work that you all do for the district. Thank you all. Trustee Dooley, you will be deeply missed. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, student board member Bitt is absent tonight. Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Riser?
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Marius?
Here.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Quorum Crescent, thank you.
You very much, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board meeting. Public participation tonight and moving forward will be both virtual, online, and in person here in the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NVUSD.org/Board. Trustee Water, do you have anything to report from closed session?
I do. In D1, Student Discipline. 1B, Readmitted Expulsions. The board recommends for the readmission from expulsion for student 2152018A.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
And roll call vote and second by trustee Gonzalez Mars. And Vera, may we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Marius?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera.
And to A personnel. The board took action to approve the following staff recommendations effective 2022 to 23 school year. Kim Title to the position of interim principal at Bel Air Elementary. Jessica Moutner to the position of principal at Snow Elementary. Kate Gallagher to the position of assistant principal at Redwood Middle School. Effective July 1st, 2022, Susan Miller to the position of Director III of Enrollment and Accountability. And effective 2022-23 school year, Margaret Hildebrandt to the position of coordinator of the Special Education Department.
We certainly extend our congratulations to all, and Dr. Masetti, would you like to say something?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm here participating remotely as I heal from or recover from COVID. I'm so grateful that we continue to have this remote option. I want to welcome, well, first I want to note that all of the candidates that trustee Water named in the new positions are all internal NVUSD candidates. So I'd just like to start out and identify that. It's always great to know that we have talent within our organization to assume new leadership positions. With that, I'd like to give the individuals a moment to address the board. And I, some might be under some, not their full names here, so I'm just going to give it a try. But Kim Title, a new interim principal, Bel Air. Kim, can you raise your hands? Oh, she's in the room. I'm sorry, I'm at a disadvantage. I forgot. Thank you. Okay, welcome, welcome aboard, Kim, to the new management team if you'd like to come up to the podium and address the board.
There we go now. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and members of Cabinet. I am overjoyed to be standing here today to thank you for being, giving me the position of principal at Bel Air Park Magnet School. I have dedicated my 30-year teaching career to this district, and I'm excited to be now working in this capacity. I am looking forward to being a collaborative part of the principal cohort and NVUSD. Bel Air Park has a reputation of collaboration and inquiry. And I know that with a partnership between the district, the parents, and the teachers, we can continue to focus on students and student learning. So I am just overjoyed and can't wait to see what this year brings us.
Thank you. Onward. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kim. I now get, like to give, and welcome to the management team. I'd now like to give Jessica Moutner, the new principal of Snow Elementary, the opportunity to come to the podium.
Um, hello?
Jessica's online. Okay, I've got it wrong. Okay. Patience as we manage hybrid. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you very much. I don't see where I could show my face here. I just see my little picture. Um, thank you very much for this introduction and for the opportunity. I look forward to working as Snow's next principal. The staff and the community of learners are incredible, and I know that we will accomplish great things together. So once again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I really look forward to see what comes.
Fabulous. Welcome, Jessica, to the management team. I'm so grateful to have you. And then I'm going to get the third one right. We have Ms. Susan Miller, who is online. Susan Miller, the current principal of New Tech. Would you like to, in this, the new director of enrollment and accountability, Sam, Ms. Miller, would you like to address the school board?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm sorry that I can't be there in person tonight, but I would like to thank you for this appointment. I know I'm stepping into an important role, especially during this time of declining enrollment. And I feel very honored to be trusted with these new responsibilities. I'm ready for the challenge, and I'm ready to get to work. So I look forward to continuing to support and implement the strategic plan of this board and help make sure that all of our students in NVUSD have access to really exceptional educational experiences. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And welcome to the district leadership team. And I am not sure, I do not see Margaret Hildebrandt online. Is she in the boardroom?
Do you like to come up to the podium? Don't be afraid, we do not bite.
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Masetti, to members of trustees and board members. I'm very grateful and honored for this opportunity to serve our students, families, and school district. I'm also equally excited to implement the strategies put forth by the consultant review. Thank you once again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Welcome, Margaret, to the NVUSD management team. And we have, and I saw her online, Ms. Kate Gallagher, who's currently at Napa High, who will be the new assistant principal at Redwood Middle School. Kate, would you like to address the school board?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. Masetti, and good evening, Board of Trustees. It is with great excitement that I have been given the opportunity to make this shift in my career from six years at Napa High School to the middle school level where I can't wait to work with the students before they cross that threshold at, at the high school level. And to do the great work that I love doing as an assistant principal with students that maybe in the next few years are going to need a little bit more support and a little bit more guidance around social and emotional growth such that when they, they hit the land running in ninth grade that they're ready to be successful. And so I'm so grateful for the approval of this shift, and I look forward to doing great things with Mr. Hartnack and the Redwood team. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Ms. Gallagher. All right, thank you, President Jankowicz, for the opportunity to present these leaders in their new, in their new roles.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom, and participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. We are moving to approval of the agenda, but I would like to make a motion to move J1A to proceed F right after E6. So I'd like to get a motion to make that change.
So moved.
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Water. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion moved to J1A approved, and now I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Oh, I, we did, trustee Chiu, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did I get a motion on this? Yes, so who gave me the first and the second? Trustee Gracia. Trustee Gracia was first, second by? Second. Second by trustee Riser. All in favor?
Aye.
amended, amended agenda is now approved. Approval of minutes for May 5th.
So moved.
Trustee Gracia, all in favor? Minutes approved. Dr. Masetti, recognition of visitors and employee organizations?
I don't see them online, so I'm going to rely on you, President Jankowicz, or Ms. Gail Young from NVEA or Leslie Walter from NAPS.
There she is. Yay.
Thank you. Say anything, just?
I'm sitting here awash in surprises as I hear of your appointments. I'm very proud of the incredible work you've done. It's also a momentous evening because of the retirement of so many wonderful, amazing people. I also wanted to acknowledge the fact that President Jankowicz.
President Jankowicz, could you have Ms. Walter go to the microphone?
Okay, thank you so much. So, good evening, President Jankowicz, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, members of the Cabinet. I am, and absent, Emily, absent student represented a bit. I'm here today as, as the president of the NAPS, NAPA Association of People's Services, and wanted to take this evening to make a special acknowledgement and recognition. Having concluded negotiations for the contract for the next three years with this district, just to reflect on how positive the process was and how much we relied on and appreciate the guidance and the heavy lifting that was done by Dana Page, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. We also appreciate the help of Terry Lynn Rosetti, Director of Special Education, as we navigated changes for our members. So having a board that comprises Deanna, Dr. Deanna Vides, Ashley Hatala, at Lisa Abbott, myself, as the executive board of NAPS, and, and having a member who had worked previously in a district where we did, they did not have the kind of process that we have here with interest-based problem solving. It was really refreshing, and it was a process that I would endorse for others. So I would like to thank Dana Page and Doc, and Terry Lynn Rosetti and Dr. Masetti for your guidance along the way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I don't see Ms. Young this evening. Here in the audience, Dr. Masetti.
Great. Proceed with the agenda. Thank you, President Jankowicz.
Thank you. So we moved J1A up so that we can acknowledge all the retirees in this room this evening. So let's move on. Assistant Superintendent Page?
Thank you, and good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, NVUSD staff and community. It gives me great pleasure to present tonight and honor our retirees. Before we go any further, I would just like to thank the HR team who were instrumental in planning tonight's celebration, particularly Norris Tregoning, who did the lion's share of the preparation for the event and is serving as our photographer tonight. And also Gina DeLuca and Maria Lara, who've joined us tonight to help with the logistics here in the room. This year, we have 70 retirees, up from 56 last year. They include both certificated and classified employees and represent a wide variety of positions, sites, and departments. There are 27 teachers, two counselors, nine clerical staff, six food service workers, four people from maintenance and operations, and more. Five are managers, and 15 people worked in special education. Collectively, our retirees have logged over 1,427.82 years of service. This year's employee class of 2022 also includes two married couples retiring together and at least five parents or grandparents of current NVUSD employees, thus demonstrating that working here in NVUSD is fun for the whole family. Last year, I said it was the most challenging year ever. That was true until this year. Like all of our employees, our retirees have demonstrated incredible commitment to our students and have endured through the toughest of times. But over the last 10, 20, 30-plus years our retirees have worked for the NVUSD, they have experienced some great times as well with students, colleagues, and the community. They have borne witness to thousands of steps forward, lightbulb moments, and miraculous growth. NVUSD employees consistently report their number one reason for working here is the students. That is true whether you work at a school or at the district office, whether you prepare lessons, food, or payroll. Our students are the reason our retirees began their professional journey with the NVUSD. They are the reason they stayed, and they are who they will likely miss the most when they retire. Now, before I wish you well and officially send you off into the sunset, I want you to know that you will always be welcome here. No, literally, you can come back and sub anytime because we need you. Please consider it. But truthfully, you have earned a lifelong place on our honor roll. We thank you for your long and marvelous careers and many years of service. We now have a brief slideshow featuring all of this year's retirees, and then we will present the ceremonial plaques to those people who are able to join us in person. So, Mr. Michaels, would you please roll the slideshow?
Yes, one second.
Thank you. Thank you. So, we do have some of our retirees here tonight, and we would like to present them with the plaques that we have developed for them. There is a resolution on each plaque with a customized portion for each of our retirees. So, we have a few of them here, and when I call your name, you wouldn't mind coming up so I can give you your plaque, and then we'll take a little picture over here. President Jankowicz, can you help us out with the photo? Thank you. So, we'll start with Judith Christman. Alan Clayton. We have Charles Drazel. Elizabeth Hawkins. Stephen LaVoy. Nicolette Lee. Jennifer Lemmons. Deanna DeeDee Lockett. Pam Perkins. We'll do these separately, but I don't know, maybe you want to do a picture together? Together? Okay, we have Stephanie and Tom Solberg. Well, thank you. That concludes our presentation. Thank you very much for allowing us to present our class of 2022 retirees. Again, 1,427.82 years of service. So, thank you for allowing us some time tonight. Student of the Month. Thank you all. Congratulations. Okay. Oh, dear. Well, at least we get to transition to another wonderful part of our agenda, which is recognition of Students of the Month. As a reminder, recognition of Students of the Month is generously sponsored by the Napa Valley Education Foundation. And Principal Cisneros, I think you're doing double duty this evening. Are you with us?
Yes, I am. I am here with you. Thank you again so much for this opportunity. Unfortunately, I do not have the Valley Oak students here with me. One had to go to work, and the other one, her right, had to pick her up because her right has to go to work, and her one-and-a-half-year-old is ready for bed. But I do have her speech if you want me to read a little something that she wrote to thank everyone for this recognition. So, this one's from Alonda. Alonda has been with us and has really had, you know, a little bit of a challenge, but with all the support that we provided for her here on campus, she's really turned herself around. She's a mom of a 21-month-old baby. She's just really embraced being a student and really connected her education to her future and her well-being of her daughter Hazel. So, she says, "First, I want to thank the Board of Trustees, the Education Foundation, my family, friends, and Valley Oak staff. I'm honored to be recognized with this award, given my school of history. I'm 17-years-old, 17-years-old, with a 21-month-old daughter named Hazel. A little bit about myself, I like cars, I like the way they sound and run, especially Dodge Charger and Silverado Truck. Something I don't like would probably be loud people in the morning. I think we can resonate with that. I don't know why, it's just annoying. I also like to color or go on walks with my daughter, it's just relaxing, and I get to see her have some fun. Since the first week of sophomore year, I started at Valley Oak. Yes, it has shaped who I am today, who I am today. I love it here. The teachers are so nice, they care about you so much, it makes me feel comfortable. Here, nobody judges you, you are respected too. Ever since I came here, I got more work done. The teachers helped me out with my work, and you learn as well. Yes, I did have a lot of challenging life circumstances that affected me. My parents got divorced, we were homeless for a while, and then I got depressed. I got pregnant at 15. My daughter, I had my daughter at 16, and now she is 21 months old. So, I feel like besides all I went through, I gained strength to be stronger for my daughter. She gave me the strength too, and she gives me motivation to do better. Now that my baby is almost two, I'm almost 18, and I like that because I'm going to be able to grow up with her, and I want to walk the stage with her and show her that mommy has gone far. My plans after high school is to go to adult ed, adult school, and get my CNA, then go to the college and start my nursing career. As much as I love babies, I want to be a labor and delivery nurse. I come from a poor, hard-working family, and I have the opportunity to go to college. I also want to make my mom and daughter proud. My goal is to help my mom and give my daughter the life she deserves. I want to thank the Board of Trustees, the Napa Valley Education Foundation, for this award in Valley Oak High School." That's on behalf of Ms. Alonda Hernandez. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Cisneros. Would you like to move on to Napa Valley Independent Studies?
Yes, please. And I am going to be presenting both Anau and Carla together. Ms. Holly Guerenter, their independent studies teacher nominated them and gave me a little write-up to share with the board tonight. And so, Anau and Carla recently became parents of a baby boy. They have had to quickly learn to juggle work, parenting, and completing their high school diplomas. Anau works full-time in construction while Carla stays home and takes care of their son. Life is always easy, but they continue to persevere with common goal of making a better life for themselves and their son. Their goal is becoming first-generation college students and becoming closer to reality as they finish up their high school credits. In fact, last week, Carla and Anau met with the Council of Napa Valley College to enroll as students for next fall. They both are interested in, they are both interested in taking care of others and are hoping to pursue a career in healthcare at Napa Valley College. So, congratulations to both Carla and Anau for representing Napa Valley Independent Studies. Thank you very much.
Please extend our congratulations to all the deserving students.
I sure will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Public comments on non-agenda items. Trustee Water, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items received via email at publiccomment@nbusd.org?
We do not.
We do not. Do we have any public comment in person? It looks like we do not. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
We do not. There is no public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you very much. We will move to the consent agenda, where a common motion takes action without discussion on a roll-call vote. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Riser. Do we have any public, oh, we asked that roll-call vote, please, Vera?
Yes. Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vera. We just got to experience the celebration of the retiree presentation, so now we move on to instructional services. Actually, we're going to go to do board reports. I'm so sorry, I skipped ahead. I truly apologize. We start with the Board of Education and Student Board Rep, but our Student Board Rep is not here this evening, but if you would like to learn a little bit about her, I suggest you go back and read the front page of the Napa Register article where she was featured regarding her work on climate change and her graduation status. So, our sincere congratulations to Student Board Member Bit, and we will start with trustee Chu with your report.
Thank you. Trustee Riser and I have been pretty busy doing site visits still. I think we're almost at the end. We went to Northwood Elementary School. Thank you to Principal Suzanne Flint for hosting us. Phillips Elementary School, thank you to Principal Julie Jones. Suzanne Flint for hosting us. Phillips Elementary School, thank you to Principal Julie Jones. Snow Elementary School to visit the youth cinema class. That was fabulous to see all the students in action and just the way that they have grown through this program. And thank you to our outgoing Principal Olivia McCormick for hosting us there. We also, this week, we went to visit the American Canyon Boys and Girls Club sites, which included the clubhouse, Canyon Oaks, and Napa Junction. The students from ACMS and Donzo Way attend the club at the clubhouse. And it was just a great introduction and just a little taste of what our students will be experiencing next year. And they are fully staffed for the summer and ready to take on the students, which is great. And then, we also attended the Napa Junction Family Resource Center ribbon cutting, which was, which is the first FRC in American Canyon. So, very grateful for all the sponsorships and the school district for making that happen. I also attended the coffees with Principal Carlisa Patalier at ACMS, where we got to listen to parent input about the happenings at that school. That was on the 12th. Today, I just went to the coffee with the principal of Canyon Oaks with Stephanie Vasquez. And it's a little sobering because, of course, on everyone's mind are the school shootings that happened around the country, but mainly in Texas. But it's really, you know, it's encouraging that parents really want to help the schools. And so, I'm hoping that this will mobilize parents to volunteer within our school and maybe, you know, write to legislature to try to change the laws so that the schools don't have to be suffering as a consequence of nothing that the schools and the students have been doing. So, hopeful for that, crossing my fingers. And I also attended the coffee with the superintendent at Silverado Middle School. That was great attendance, by the way. Really enjoyed meeting all the parents from Napa. In terms of community engagement, I had several of those as well. It was a pretty busy three weeks. Attended the Canyon Oaks Elementary School Spring Arts Festival, which is a PTO fundraiser, and they displayed a lot of wonderful, beautiful student art. I attended a meeting of the ACHS PhilippineX Life and Generations Group with a facilitator, Mr. Clarence Memmerill, and they received funding from Napa Valley Education Foundation. They just got a five-year extension on that grant. Great group to really engage the students. They're working on transitioning from middle school to high school at this point in the school year. So, got to see a lot of those students moving on to the next level. I attended the NCOE Napa County School Staff of the Year on the 18th. Had a tour of a proposed eco-center in American Canyon from the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation. They had this beautiful vision of an eco-center that basically is going to be a way to teach, you know, climate change education for students, environmental science. It would be a wonderful resource whenever it opens. They're in the fundraising phase. So, thank you to the CEO, Janelle Selig, one of their board members, Liz Corey, who happens to also be an NVUSD teacher, who also heads up the garden club at Canyon Oaks. And Mark Joseph was also there, so got to tour with the city councilman. And a fun thing was being interviewed by an ACHS Mandarin student for her class project. Always great to interact with students. And I'm happy, you know, that they were doing a project with cultural significance in the month of API celebrations. I attended some of the other district meetings, which I'll report on later. And on a personal note, I actually got to chaperone some fourth graders on a field trip to Rush Ranch. It was fabulous. The kids loved being out and about. It was their first field trip after a two-year hiatus. So, but I will have to say, thank goodness for teachers because after just spending a few hours with 32 children, I needed a nap before I picked up my kids. So, but it was a lot of fun. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much trustee Chu. I believe you. Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Yeah. I had a couple of, a few things scheduled, but the ones that I were able to attend, I was able to attend the Browns Valley Coffee with the Superintendent, and then one of my committee meetings with the City of Napa and NVUSD. And then, I got really sick, so a couple of things got canceled that need to be rescheduled. And I'm just looking forward to adding things back to the calendar at that point. But it is coming the end of the school year, so things might have to just come back until next year. So, but looking forward to just continuing the good work.
Thank you very much trustee Riser.
Thank you. I will just briefly, I won't reiterate too much of what trustee Chu said because we travel often in a two-pack. I did site visits at Northwood Elementary School, Phillips Elementary School, two in one week to Snow Elementary School, one time visiting with Superintendent Masetti, and then again with trustee Chu to drop in on the Youth Cinema Project fifth grade classes as they were finishing up their films, which is very exciting. Looking forward to their big grand opening, or what, what's it called? Premiere of their movies. The coffee with the superintendent at Browns Valley Elementary School and Silverado Middle School. I went to the ACMS Coffee with the Principal, the State of the District event. I really enjoyed that, you know, experience of community with everybody that gathered there in person. The NCOE Teacher and a Classified Employee of the Year Celebration, Curriculum and Students Services Committee meeting. I actually, as a Napa High parent, took the opportunity to accept the invitation in my parent role to tour the Napa Valley College CTE offerings and was really impressed to see the really targeted career track CTE offerings. They had digital media, culinary, wine-making. It was really, I enjoyed beginning, you know, scratching the surface of what Napa Valley College offers to our, with our dual enrollment and recent grads. I also had the pleasure of serving as a judge in Ms. Tammy Lee's Math and Robotics CSTEM class at ACMS. I stayed for half of a day and got to see four classes cycle through and share their robo-play films that were a culminating project of the year of their robotics and coding. And it was really a pleasure to see such a master teacher in action and to see the engagement and enthusiasm that her students bring to that class and that she cultivates. Again, toured the Boys and Girls Clubs facilities in American Canyon, the Napa Junction Elementary School Family Resource Grand Opening, Family Resource Center Grand Opening. And then, also as a parent, I attended a really great event that was a biannual called the Spotlight and Singing for Napa High Choir. And it's the Vocal Music Workshop. And then, different students can audition to do songs. And for the, it's going to make me emotional, but for the first and last time, my daughters performed a song together. Kira played guitar, Maya sang, there was another guitarist, a violin player, and another singer. They were quintet and they killed it. So, that was a real pleasure for me. And I am going to take a moment to build on what trustee Chu said here. Take a turn for the somber, but please bear with me. I've shared before that I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action. I joined the grassroots effort after the shooting at Parkland High School. And I can pretty much draw a direct line from my activism with Moms Demand Action to my sitting here tonight in this seat. That involvement motivated me to step up to a larger platform to try to make a difference in my community. And I had already planned on making some remarks today because this, not this weekend, but next weekend, we won't have a board meeting before then, is National Wear Orange Day. It's June 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And this day is an annual event that was started almost 10 years ago in honor of a young woman named Hadia Pendleton. She marched in President Obama's Second Inaugural Parade. And a week later, she was shot and killed on a playground in Chicago. Soon after this tragedy, Hadia's friends commemorated her life by wearing orange, the color that hunters wear in the woods to protect themselves and others. Wear orange is now observed every June. Thousands of people across the country wear the color in orange in honor of Hadia and the more than 40,000 people who were killed with guns and approximately 85,000 who were shot and wounded every year in our country. I encourage members of our community to join the annual Golden Gate Bridge Walk. That is our local Wear Orange event. If you're interested in joining, you can go to wearorange.org. It's Saturday, June 4th. You meet at 11:30 a.m. on the San Francisco side of the bridge. And I have done that march once and it's a really powerful and moving experience. It has been a rough couple of weeks. May 14th brought us another in a long line of mass shootings. This one at a grocery store in Buffalo, New York. Four days later, a juvenile member of our Napa community was shot and injured less than a mile from three of our school campuses, not to mention my home. The same evening, there was gunfire that fortunately did not end in injury or death in American Canyon, not too far from another one of our schools on the west side of Highway 29. And then, the news broke Tuesday that it had happened again, this time in Uvalde, Texas, where 19 fourth graders and two teachers had been murdered in the latest, but likely not the last, school shooting. My heart breaks for those babies and for their teachers, for their families, for their survivors left with a trauma that will last a lifetime. My heart is with the teachers and school staff here in Napa Valley Unified and across the country. We ask far too much of them, way too much. We ask them to risk their lives to educate our children and day after day, they do. They suit up and show up and give our kids everything they have, even when their hearts are breaking or filled with fear. And for Eva Morelos and Irma Garcia, they gave, as President Lincoln said, "The last full measure of devotion." But they shouldn't have had to. They should be alive today. As a friend of mine who teaches here in the district said in a social media post, "Every teacher is feeling heartbreak today. We are not okay, but we have to be for our students." So, I just want to take a moment to express my gratitude to our amazing teachers, administrators, and support staff. Thank you for showing up this week, even though I know that you're hurting. In schools across the country, we practice active shooter drills. And rightly so, the tragedy at Robb Elementary School was at least the 30th school shooting this year. And we haven't even reached June. But I contend that if we're willing to train our students and staff to run, hide, and fight, then we must also be willing to train them to spot warning signs and report them. We must equip them with the information, tools, and infrastructure to respond effectively when someone is covered in red flags. We must continue to educate our community about our existing red flag laws that enable law enforcement to remove weapons from a home of a gun owner that is identified as a danger to themselves or others. And we must continue to communicate to our community and educate them about how to safely store firearms so that children and those struggling to maintain mental stability cannot access them and cause harm. Moms Demand Action has a simple catchphrase that they use all the time. Keep going. You have to take breaks when you need to, but then you keep going. We have to maintain hope that our actions make a difference because they do and they will. I refuse to surrender to despair and powerlessness. I have hope that we will continue to make change and prevent gun violence. And I thought I would end by sharing a few things that give me hope right now. In part, due to the work of Moms Demand Action volunteers, there are six gun sense bills that are working their way through our state legislature right now, including a ghost bill targeting ghost guns, which are prevalent in our community, and an increase in funding for violence interruption programs. I want to give a shout out to Jenny Olson, our community member and founder of Teens Connect, whose post on social media yesterday gave me a much-needed feeling of optimism. She wrote, quote, "Our incoming teen council leaders," and one of them is my younger daughter Maya, "want to design a prevention and awareness program for elementary students to teach them about mental health and wellness so they don't grow up to hurt themselves or others." On Tuesday, I had the pleasure of meeting the American Canyon Chief of Police at the opening of our Family Resource Center at Napa Junction. And he was very supportive when I brought the idea of disseminating safe gun storage information through our student resource officers. Funding for mental health services in schools is on the rise and we are able to reach and support more of our students who are struggling. And lastly, our NVUSD team gives me hope. We have an incredible group of dedicated educators on our team, in our classrooms across the district, as well as the Education Center staff and leadership team who are working hard to direct programming and maximize our resources. I am confident that our team will continue to be laser-focused on student wellness, which is, of course, inextricably connected to gun violence as well as suicide prevention. I know that many of the paths to ending gun violence lie in the hands of our lawmakers, but I encourage everyone who's listening to think of ways that you might make a difference. Together, let's keep going until we are out of this crisis.
Thank you trustee Riser. Trustee Water?
Thank you. Thank you Eve. Well, the majority of Americans agrees with you. Now, we've got to move some of our legislators. I certainly went through a lot of those practice drills. And one time at Napa High, we didn't think it was a practice. Now, it turned out that it was malfunctioning electricity caused by the rain back when it rained. But I do remember thinking, okay, this isn't a practice. This isn't a practice with the kids in the room. And telling them I was going to defend them with a fire extinguisher. And they said, huh? What? And I said, I don't know, but it works for Bruce Willis. You know, we're trying to like diffuse the tension. But when it was over, my colleagues and I looked at each other and went, oh, oh, well. But I'll tell you what, a bunch of kids learned that day that they had teachers who would do whatever it took to defend them. A couple of kids told me, oh, you really like us, don't you? And I said, yes, we do. That's why we're here. Well, um, okay. Let's see. I think after I was out of quarantine, the minute I tested negative, and I want everyone to know, I got COVID at a funeral and not at a rager. I went to Napa High School's Alice in Wonderland, which, you know, everyone at Napa High knows, that's my favorite book. And I was very touched to receive a couple of autographed posters. And it was, it was very, very enjoyable. And then, on the 10th, I had a meeting with City of Napa and their minutes available for that. But that was great. It was, you know, I feel very confident that, you know, we're working together well. On 5/11, I went to, did a little community work and went to Elba's businesses, Elba's Workplace Event, where I ran into a man who, young man, who's got a master's degree and was in my very first class at Napa High. And time does march on. And delightful person. I attended Board Facilities and, let's see, wait, wait. Facilities, the committee meeting on facilities and technology. And then, on the And then on the, I, I watched so many webinars, I can't see straight. But, you know, ask me about the state budget, you know, I'm ready. On the twenty-third, I went to Napa County Office of Education's, uh, Student Photo Show at the, at the, um. At Copia and saw a lot of our students work. And on, um, the twenty-fourth, along with several of you, I attended a Selpa meeting online. And I also went to the, um, oh, I met with, uh, the principal at Silverado Middle School, uh, and she wrote me into leading a book. Club next, next fall. And, um, then I went to the Napa Junction Family Resource Center Grand Opening. Thank you, Napa Valley Ventners for donating a million dollars for that facility. And, um. And then, uh, let's see, was that it? I'm sure there was something else happening. There has to be, there were three things that day. Oh, that was it. Those are the three things. And then, um. Today, I, um, spun by Napa High School and, um, met with a couple of teachers and, you know, dropped off some books. The usual. And now I'm here. Now I'm here.
And, trusty water for being here.
Yep.
Trusty Gracia.
Yes, so on the sixteenth, I attended the AXA presentation on the Governor's May Revice. On the seventeenth, I attended, uh, Facilities and Technology Meeting. The eighteenth was the State of the District. Also on the eighteenth was the Napa County Teacher of the Year Presentation. And then, uh, the twenty-first through the twenty-second was the CSBA Delegate Assembly Meeting. Uh, and then on the twenty-fourth, as was previously mentioned, I attended the Selpa. Meeting, so those are my activities.
Thank you very much, Trustee Gracia. Maya, my fellow trustees have expressed the anguish we as individuals, we as a district. And we as a nation feel on behalf of all the impacted families. It is beyond comprehension and it is beyond heartbreaking. There are times my heart feels more than my words can properly express. And this is one of those times. My fervent hope is that we address this at the legislative policy level. We continue to be committed to our students. Prioritizing safety and mental health and their wellbeing. As there is nothing more valuable. Dr. Masetti will speak to this in her comments. I understand what our community has been through, through the last few years and the last few days. It's hard to fathom. And our community deserves our unwavering support, love and attention. I too attended, it's a really difficult segue there. I too attended Coffee with the Superintendent at Browns Valley. Napa High School Community Event at the Moose Lodge. The CSBA May Budget Revision Workshop. Coffee with the Superintendent at Silverado Middle School. NVUSD State of the District, the NCOE School Staff Celebration. I did not, I got a little bit of a cold, but I did want to go to Pictures of Hope at the CIA at Copia. It was an exhibition highlighting the photography of NVUSD middle school students. And I believe it was, um, hosted by the ACE Program. And middle school students submitted photographs. So what a great honor for them. I went to the Selpa Executive Meeting. And then, um, Trustee Riser and myself met with Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings earlier in the week. Okay, um. Our Board Reports, uh, Special Education Community Advisory Committee, did you meet?
Yes, we met on the sixteenth of May and we listened to community input. About the, um, upcoming transfer of special ed for preschool into NVUSD.
Thank you very much. City of American Canyon.
We did not meet during this time.
City of Napa.
We did meet. Um, it was, uh, very pleasant and the minutes are attached.
Wonderful. Town of Yountville, David, do you have any comments?
We did not meet.
Thank you very much. Dr. Masetti. Superintendent and executive staff comments?
Yes. So thank you, President Jankowicz. Uh, good evening, NVUSD, um, staff. Community and of course Board of Trustees. I am participating in the meeting tonight again remotely as I recover from COVID nineteen. Um, I do share tonight's report with a heavy heart as we feel the suffering and pain around us. It's already been mentioned, um, by some of the board members. As the nation continues to process the horrific news of the shooting at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. And the unspeakably tragic loss of life that confronts us as a community yet again. I am compared, compelled to share my deep profound sadness for these families and the entire Uvalde school community. It's difficult to think of the tremendous grief and suffering the parents are experiencing. The loss of educators who died protecting the children they committed. To teaching is also very difficult to accept. And I also want to send support and strength. To Uvalde Unified School District Superintendent Dr. Hal Harrell. Who I can imagine, imagine is managing a very difficult set of circumstances. Caused by this tragic school massacre in his district. When an incident like this occurs, there's much to relate to. I hope that the legislative leaders in our nation will work collaboratively to create and adopt laws that prioritize children's safety. If you have thoughts about school safety issues or thoughts on this matter in general, I encourage you to write your elected officials. While laws and potential policy considerations are discussed and debated. Here at the local level, we have children in our schools today. Who we have to keep safe as these issues get sorted out in Washington DC and state capitals across the country. So tonight, I just want to share with the community that we as. Can you hear me?
Yes, Dr. Masetti, we can hear you.
I'm sorry. Um, tonight, I just want to share with the community that we will be in, NVUSD will be focused on a two-pronged approach. Part of our reacting to the horror and tragedy, tragedy of this week. First, um, there's never enough that we can do as far as safety. There's always room for improvement and refinement of our campus safety protocols. And we can always examine our frequency of practicing them. As we wrap up the school year and move into the summer, I will gather the appropriate staff members to revisit and confirm. That our own campus safety measures here in NVUSD are being implemented with fidelity and proficiency. We will do this work, of course, in partnership. With our local law enforcement agencies, Napa and City of American Canyon Police Departments. I have lots of details to sort out, but we can establish a work group or a team that examines the topic closely. With some focused attention as we prepare for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Safety does not only refer to school operations and tactics that ensure physical safety. Here's where the second prong of the two-pronged approach comes in. Safety also, of course, includes psychological safety. Which means that parallel to confirming our school safety plans and protocols are meeting high standards. We also need to continue on the path of building. A robust infrastructure of mental health resources for our students, families and employees. In fact, uh, this provides me a natural opportunity to share some good news with the NVUSD community. Um, that we did recently apply. For and, uh, was awarded a five point two five million dollar California Community Schools Partnership Program Grant. In partnership and collaboration with Napa Valley Education Foundation and On the Move. It's exciting to receive this level of resource. Although the grant will be focused on four elementary schools, in this case, Snow, McPherson, Phillips and Shear. Anytime we can receive grant funding for efforts like this. It provides us an opportunity to shift other resources that can be strategically used district-wide. To support efforts like mental health resources, services. And interventions for families and students across the district. So I just want to reassure the community, we will continue, um, down, down that path that, that we have a great start on. With that being said, I would like to add one additional comment regarding the school shooting. I completely understand that our schools need to go beyond educating our students and the part of education is ensuring. The wellbeing, the socio-emotional wellness of our children and our community. But I also know that our school systems are exhausted and that our society is turning to schools to do it all. I hope that as our legislative leaders look at policies that promote the safety of our children. That they also consider the necessity for more social services and programs. That can provide families with access to all the resources necessary. For children to have a better chance to live happier and healthier lives. Especially in this difficult post-pandemic reality that is plagued with a substantial amount of fear, exhaustion, sadness and suffering. Tonight, I also have, um, some other difficult news to share. I did say it was a report I'm delivering with a heavy heart. Vintage High School, twelfth grade student Monica Flores. Died unexpectedly Tuesday night. Our hearts go out to the Flores family and the wonderful friends and community members who knew Monica. We grieve with them and offer our support during this difficult time. I spoke with Sonia Lima, uh, Monica's mother, who also happens to be the office manager at our amazing Willow Elementary School earlier today. We cried together and she shared with me her grief, but also her pride and dedication as a mother. Sonia wanted me to make sure that we take a moment to celebrate Monica this evening and honor her. Mr. Jordan, can you please put up the slide that includes photos of Monica on the screen? Sonia shared with me that her beautiful daughter was her princess. Monica was excited to have recently received a scholarship from the Napa Police Department because she was planning. A future in law enforcement after attending two years at Napa Valley College. And hopefully transferring to a four-year university. The loss of a young person like this is always so difficult. Although these dreams will not be actualized, Monica's love and light will live with us forever. I want to let the Vintage High School. Willow Elementary School and River Middle School Communities. Um, River Middle School is where Monica's younger sister attends school. I want them all to know that our NVUSD District Leadership Team will continue. To support the sites as they process this loss. Thank you to our NVUSD staff that keep showing up for our students during what feels like a week of chaos and unacceptable loss. Too many lives were lost too prematurely this week. We are resolved to support each other and to support our young people. President Jankowicz, I would request that we take a moment of silence in honor of Monica. And the children and educators of the Uvalde community. Thank you. With that, I'm going to turn to my Assistant Superintendents and we will start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present earlier. I have no, um, further report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Um, next, I'd like to proceed with Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees the Business Services Division.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. The business office has attended a number of workshops regarding the Governor's May Revision for the State Budget. Final adoption of the budget will occur in mid-June. Some of the highlights include a six point five six percent cost of living increase, a three-year average daily attendance calculation. Money for after-school programs and much-needed money for deferred maintenance. Some of the items that have not been proposed include pension relief for Stirs and Pers and ADA relief for the current year. We are cautiously optimistic about the potential for additional funds. However, due to declining enrollment, we know that the true increase in revenues will vary district by district. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manguala. And we can have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees Operational Services.
Uh, good evening, President Jankowitz, NBC Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Masetti. Student Board Representative Emily Bit, and members of the NVSD community. Thank you for an opportunity to provide you with an update of Operational Services. In Food Service, I'd like to recognize two North Bay businesses that are providing locally sourced products. We are providing artisan bake, uh, bagels from toasted at secondary schools. And for elementary schools, hot dog and hamburger buns are coming from Alvarado Street Bakery. And I want to remind everybody and don't forget that the focaccia bread from West One Bakery, which was featured at the State of the District event, is also included in some school meals. We're very thankful for these local business partnerships. On May nineteenth and on May twenty-fourth, Director of Transportation Justin Binion. Was instrumental in transporting middle school students from Harvest Middle School to either Redwood, Silverado or Unidos Middle School. To ensure Harvard students could participate in Orientation Day where students will be attending school next year. I also want to thank Director of Food Service Kristen Teakill for making sure these additional students were fed a nutritious lunch. State of the District event was held on Wednesday, May eighteenth. I'd like to thank the Technology and Communications Teams for their high-level collaboration with the Maintenance Operations and Food Service Departments. Special thanks to Directors of Operations Gloria Aguirre, Director of Maintenance and Grounds Albert De Susan, and Executive Assistant Marie McMurray. For then, for ensuring everything was just right for the event. I just, graduation season is now upon us. In fact, tonight. Napa Valley College is graduating, just finished graduating three hundred students at Memorial Stadium. Um, uh, Maintenance and Operation Team members have been planning over the past month and we're ready to help, uh, and we did help. Uh, the two thousand twenty-two graduates have a great celebrations. On a little bit of a different note, Maintenance Employees have recently participated in High School Career Days as guest speakers. Specifically, I'd like to recognize Hector Gallegos and Oscar Ochoa for speaking with students at Valley Oak High School about career opportunities in Maintenance and Grounds. Additionally, the Maintenance and Grounds Department will be using high school student interns this summer for the first time ever. High school students participated in a round of interviews before being selected. Now, and we will have, be having students work four, five-hour shifts a week over the, over eight weeks, uh, starting when school's, uh, ends. Learning about the different trades in Maintenance and Grounds. We're very excited about this partnership. And finally, the Office of Public School Construction, uh, OPSC as we call it. Has instituted two changes to the Facility Inspection Tool or the FIT Assessment conducted annually by school district across the state of California. Specifically Category Five, which is on overall cleanliness. And Category Eight, which focuses on restrooms. There have also been some changes to the data collected about each site such as estimated square footage of school sites. The Maintenance and Operations Staff have already participated in a briefing to learn about the changes. And staff are currently conducting our pre-summer FIT assessment. Thank you, and this concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And our last report will be from Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Um, thank you, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, President Jankowitz, Board, Board of Trustees. Uh, Doc, um, Dr. Masetti and the NVUSD community. Um, as Dr. Masetti shared, it's been a tough week to be an educator this, um. Um, with, with all of the, the tragedies that have happened, um, recently. Um, but she also shared some, some promising news in terms of the district's recent awarding of the five point two five million dollars. In the California Community Schools Partnership, uh, Grant. We were able to partner with the Napa Valley Education Foundation as well as On the Move and this, um. We will be able to utilize this grant to develop a cohesive system of interventions that both promote social emotional. Well-being as well as addressing barriers to learning. Um, as Dr. Masetti mentioned, our award covers five years of funding for Snow, Phillips, McPherson and Shear. Um, and this is going to provide onsite. Um, and increase the, the sort, the resources at our Family Resource Centers. Um, in a coordinated and integrated mental health and social services. Uh, resources on campus. We are committed to blending school and community resources into a unified and comprehensive system. Of interventions that will create transformational learning in school communities for students and families. I want to thank Director Sarah Knox and Student, Student Support and Wellness Coordinator Kristen Nelson. For their efforts in planning and submitting the grant application. That will provide these critical resources to these, um, schools, um, that can really benefit from it. Also with a focus on safe responsive and supportive middle, uh, safe and responsive supportive middle school transition. Which is a key aspect of Board Priority Number One. Students from Harvest Middle, River Middle. Napa Valley Language Academy, Napa Valley Independent Study. And Public Vista School had the opportunity to visit their future middle school campuses for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. During the middle school transition days on Thursday, May nineteenth and Tuesday, May for, uh, twenty-fourth. Um, the NVUSD middle school staff began planning for these days in February with the goal of providing students. An opportunity to build connections to their new school community. And begin the process of finding a place and a space to belong at their new school. Over this two-day period, close to five hundred NVUSD students participated. In school tours and team-building games led by student leaders and staff. Middle school students from schools across the district. Connected with friends and made new connections to peers, staff and the school community that they will be attending next year. Colleagues had an opportunity also to build connections as they worked together side by side to support our students. These days are the result of the entire NVSD team working together at both the site and district level. Thank you to the middle school staff who hosted, traveled and changed their daily operations. Um, to support. to support the trips. Thank you to Transportation, Food Service, Business Services, Human Resources, and the Instructional Division Team for their support with buses, food, subs, instructional support, and school supplies. The two days truly embody the work of equity and excellence in NVSD. Additionally, later this evening, you will hear from our district's English Learner Advisory Council, or D-LAC. Our D-LAC parent representatives are excited to share with you this evening the progress and work they have done to support our multilingual learners to develop their English language skills. I want to thank D-LAC President Elba Marquez and the D-LAC Parent Leadership Team, along with Parent Engagement Coordinator Viviana Larrera, for their work on this presentation. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We have addressed the consent agenda, and so now we are moving on to Instructional Services and the reference D-LAC presentation. Pat, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, President Jankowitz. Tonight, Coordinator Viviana Larrera and D-LAC President Elba Marquez will start the presentation. They are both online, ready to go, and I believe,
Welcome.
Mr. Michaels, if you can bring up their slide presentation, please. Thank you so much.
I'd like to go ahead and introduce our president for D-LAC this year, Elba. She will go ahead and begin our presentation, and I will go ahead and interject along with Susana Garcia from On the Move. So with that, we have Elba Marquez Rodriguez, D-LAC President for the school year.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. Like we said, we are presenting what was the school year of 2021-22, and my role as the president of that school year as president of D-LAC. And I would like to start with the presentation.
Next slide, please.
Next slide. Thank you. One of the sharing points is in regards to the things that we have accomplished through this year. In regards to the outstanding multilingual learner awards, is that it is important to celebrate an academic accomplishment that showcases the hard work each multilingual student encounters when trying to reclassify. This recognition was way overdue, and I am glad to see it take place. In regards to the student classification recognition, the idea was definitely a positive one. It is amazing to see the numbers of how many students within NVUSD reclassify each month. Unfortunately, showing a number rather than the student's name does not do justice to the hard work that each student demonstrates every day to reclassify. For the ELAC representative site level shareout, this shareout allows us to unify. There are many ways to do things, and we can always learn from each other. It is important to allow our ELAC representatives to speak on what works for their sites and allow them to be leaders for their sites. In regards to the focus on current education and leadership, the pro that I found with this focus group was that I got to meet other parents with the same drive to volunteer and make a positive impact in our community. Unfortunately, there are more cons than pros. In regards to the program, I felt that if we have 31 schools who have ELAC representatives, then why were they not prioritized, even if it was because it was the ELAC group that requested this leadership education program? Another one is that the ELAC and the D-LAC average meeting times were not taken into consideration for scheduling. Another one is that we began with 11 participants at the beginning of this program, and the program was only completed by five of the 11 participants. It also provided me with the insight to understand that our job as parent advocates for multilingual families still needs a lot of work, and it's just the beginning. Another one is that the information and ideas given by the participants were later shared as an idea that the organization leading the group had come up with, something that really didn't fit right for us. One more. As a leader, I would ask myself, what was the reason why we didn't have all 31 schools represented? Why was there a lack of interest from our parents to take place with this organization? And I really hope that the purpose for next year is to have representatives from all 31 schools in the leadership program to develop a more robust and equitable program for all of those and multilingual families.
Thank you, Elba. Thank you very much. Next slide, please. I will go ahead and go over how all of this work ties together. Elba just went over the different additions that were added this year to our D-LAC meetings in order to go ahead and make sure that we're meeting everyone's needs, that communication is had, that acknowledgements are acknowledged, and that we're aware of students that are reclassifying, celebrations, all of that. But with that came this project of the leadership cohort. It was really out of these D-LAC representatives a need for us to work with them in order to teach them leadership skills along with a parent education focus. And so out of these meetings that we've had, we've met with the group for a total of eight months regularly, for about three hours on a monthly basis, and you'll get to hear from them directly in a few slides. But with that, the focus was really looking at it as a whole, as a whole systems approach to how we communicate with our families, how we engage with our families, and how we provide advocacy. And so the focus is around Goal Three of our strategic plan, which really centers around providing robust communication and community engagement. We wanted those 11 that started, and like Elba said, only five of them went all the way through, but those 11 that started were able to see the importance of how communication ties leadership together, along with community engagement and advocacy. We also made sure that during these monthly cohort meetings with these NVUSD leaders that we were able to have two-way inclusive conversations, or we could go ahead and garner some feedback. When we did the recruitment of the group, when we started to recruit different parents from different sites that were predominantly ELAC reps, English Learner Advisory Committee reps, we made sure that we recruited on a grassroots outreach level, that we did outreach on a grassroots level, along with the content planning that took place as well. So we wanted to really meet people where they were at and work with that leadership component and the parent education component while going at their pace. And then lastly, we wanted to make sure that they were provided different venues and forums in which to speak at. So today, you'll be hearing from them in the presentation. There were a few of our members that initially did not have the leadership to go ahead and provide that presentation and that public speaking stance, but through this work that we've been able to do, they now are secure enough to be able to state to you how this program really helped. I do want to stress that this work is interconnected. This work cannot be done by ourselves. We have a wonderful partner on the move that I worked with. You'll be hearing from Suzie Garcia, the Program Director, in a few seconds, but this work is interconnected. The work that we do in our schools, in our community, all ties together, and there has to be an approach with multiple prongs in order for us to really be able to engage and captivate our families, whether they're English-speaking, Spanish-speaking, Tagalog-speaking, to engage them into the learning of their students and their families. So with that, I'll pass the floor to Susana Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you, Viviana. Next slide, please. Well, let me just start by saying that it has been a pleasure and honor to work with these hard-working, incredible group. Utilizing On the Move's leadership model, we have worked with this committed group of parent leaders for almost an entire school year. These parent leaders have spent many hours developing and strengthening their personal, interpersonal, and professional skills, utilizing technological tools, platforms, developing public speaking skills, practicing meeting facilitation, working collaboratively with their peers, building relationships with school and district staff, increasing their confidence, all in a safe learning space. I now have the privilege of introducing you to Mrs. Rosalba Avina. Next slide, please. An ELAC representative from McPherson Elementary School. Mrs. Avina contemplated at one point leaving the cohort, but she has pushed herself and is now wanting to share her experience through this next video. Thank you. Next slide, please. In addition to Mrs. Avina, we have additional cohort members that I would like to also recognize. Elizabeth Martinez from West Park Elementary, Angelica Chavez from Willow Elementary, Esbadi Piña from West Park Elementary, Laura Gavina from McPherson Elementary, Julia Palaes from Redwood Middle School, Mayra Contreras from Snow Elementary, Rosario Mondragon from Willow Elementary. In this next video, we have some of them sharing their stories. Can we please play the next video?
Good evening. My name is Julia Pelaes, and it's been a pleasure being part of the Parent Leadership Cohort. I have been an active parent for NVUSD since 2015. My son, Robert, at that time, had begun second grade at Shear Elementary School. Shear gave me the opportunity of becoming a parent volunteer, not only as an ELAC and D-LAC representative, but also as an English language development tutor. Opportunities like these allows us to feel welcome and a place of belonging, but most important, the opportunity to make a difference in our children's education. Parent participation and advocacy does not go unnoticed. It is because of these efforts that ELAC, D-LAC, and now the Parent Leadership Cohort exist. This is the reason why I decided to be part of the Parent Leadership Cohort. Viviana and Susana's leadership has been a gateway to this Parent Leadership Cohort. Each member brings a unique representation to our group. Having the opportunity to be part of such an amazing group has enriched my experience. Most of all, coming together and having a voice in our community has definitely left a footprint. I thank you for this opportunity and for your support.
Thank you. Okay, well, now I'd like to pass it back to Mrs. Elba Marquez to share her next steps.
Thank you, Susana. Our next steps for the Parent Leadership Development is the advanced-level content. Classes for both beginners and more advanced, as we continue with current leaders and add more. It is important to understand that it is key to have an understanding of the needs of each parent leader required, of the needs each parent leader requires, to make sure we don't lose leaders along the way, because they feel the information given is an ongoing circle that never reaches a point. For parent-led projects to support newcomer families, this was a project that Julia Pelaes definitely brought into the table. And it would be very important, being parents that have experienced this firsthand, that we can take that leadership and make sure that we meet those needs, starting from enrollment, knowing that parents may be entering a culture that they don't understand. It might be provided within their language, but it's a system they've never experienced. Maybe not knowing the terms of what an open enrollment is, not understanding what staying within your neighborhood school is, or not knowing what an overflow is. It is very important for us, being multilingual families, to know that a lot of the families that are newcomers are experiencing this culture shock in many levels, and we would really like to help advocate for them and understand that they don't just understand the process, but understand the terminology when they're enrolling their kids in a system they've never experienced before. In regards to additional experts presenting, which is bringing additional presenters who can provide more information about leading meetings and about strengthening ELAC and D-LAC, it is very important, again, to have the representation of all 31 schools. It is important for us to respect the time that all the ELAC and all the ELAC representatives have given NVUSD throughout the years, and for them to be considered within this group, to make sure that we are allowing them to develop as leaders due to the time they have committed to our program. The other one is to make sure that the strategies that NVUSD leaders is to create an internal support system that would form new leaders that would transition into ELAC-D-LAC without depending on the third party, like On the Move, just to name a third party. I think we have enough ELAC and D-LAC representatives with the qualities and the skills needed to take on this role without a third party.
Conclude your presentation?
There was a board, there was a focus on parent leadership and education. I'm so sorry. I'm a little lost with my paper. One thing that I wanted to also share is something that I share with Viviana and Matt is humanizing the roles of D-LAC representatives. In this case, the president, the vice president. I was able to attend several ELAC meetings via Zoom during this past year that many of my fellow parent liaisons had invited me to. I think it's very important for parents to understand that just being a parent is enough to be committed to this type of project. It is very important to have the heart, not necessarily the degree, to be part of this, and that there is a support system to take in place that can help you advocate and that and that will help you shape, it will help shape you to do a better role as a DILAC president or vice president. And I just hope that the work continues. Next slide. So it says, if we have any questions, I would be more than happy, Susana, Viviana, to answer, or if the questions are for me, I'm happy to also answer them.
And before we open for questions, I just want to thank DILAC President Elba Marquez and Susana from On The Move, as well as Viviana Lohera. I know that this was our first time doing a a parent leadership series and we've learned a lot. So I just really appreciate them spending the time and energy and effort in putting together a thoughtful and intentional set of a series of activities and really assisting the parents who benefited from it. So thank you all for presenting.
Thank you. Before we move forward, Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this presentation?
Public comment? Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. I apologize.
There is no public comment on this side.
Thank you very much, Mr. Michaels. I would just like to say congratulations to DILAC on their 2021-22 accomplishments. We appreciate your diligence. It is hard not to be inspired by this group of parents. I would like to thank all the members of DILAC and ELAC and a special thank you to President Elba Rodriguez for your commitment, your leadership and your voice. On behalf of our English learner students and families, our DILAC committee has been an enormous asset to NVUSD. We appreciate your guidance, perspective and your willingness to bring awareness and power to important issues. We are thankful for your viewpoint, the manner in which you educate the greater community and for your support. I know we look forward to collaborating going forward. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to just extend what has been said already. Tremendous gratitude for the amount of work in conducting, just creating a process of leadership and creating a space for that to happen. And when I see the name here in the presentations with Elba Marquez, Viviana Lohera and Susana García, right there, there's a very strong, very, very strong group of leaders. And I can't imagine, I wish I would have been in that room just watching the discussions and the action happening because it is so empowering to be in that space as the testimonies in the video showed of the one parent that said she was shy and then went on with all the things that she learned. And I just thought her wings are wide and she caught the wind and she is flying and soaring. And so that is super exciting to hear that, to see that, to feel that and to continue to work on it. I think it's absolutely well said that there's a lot to learn, there's a lot to do still. And that I hope that you, that you feel supported by the district, which is one of the most important things I think that we can do is that you feel that support. And as a board member, to feel that, feel that in various aspects to continue the good work that is happening. Because it's absolutely on the emotional part of it, just beautiful to see that. And more so, just seeing results in various ways and how it's impacting our district already. So just congratulations and just muchas gracias por todo su trabajo and por toda la comunidad de nuestros estudiantes. Muchas gracias.
I'd like to just, President Jiang, was just a brief moment. I'll be quick because so many things have been said, but I do want to personally thank the officers of the DILAC. President Marquez, you have demonstrated extraordinary stellar leadership. And I also, I think I see her on the call. Rosario is here, right, Mondragón? Who has served as vice president of DILAC. And I want to thank both of you for the multiple times that you have met with me throughout this year. You're both very, very busy with jobs and your children and in this role of service. And you gave me a lot of your time as we thought through various issues that impact the educational lives of our English learners here. And so I want to let you know it's been an absolute pleasure to work with the DILAC this year. And I do want to thank the Instructional Division for providing the support that our parent leaders have needed so that we can have a DILAC that is able to accomplish so much in terms of shaping, you know, the educational programs that are here to serve all of our kids and especially our English learners.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. I've had a request for a quick break, so if you'll be patient with us, we'll be back in about five minutes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your patience. We are moving on.
Nina Jankowitz?
Yes.
Hi, it's Dr. Musetti. During the break, I was informed that the Vice President of the D-LAC is in the audience and would just like to take a moment to address the board. So before we leave the D-LAC presentation item and go to action, could we allow Rosario Mondragón to speak, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Señora Mondragón.
Sí, buenas noches. ¿Me escuchan?
Sí.
Ah, okay. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosario Mondragón. Soy la vicepresidenta de D-LAC a nivel distrito. Respecto a la presentación que se hizo, yo agradezco la oportunidad que nos da el distrito de mantenernos informados, de tratar de seguirnos orientando. Desafortunadamente, yo no me sentí muy conectada. Espero no eres susceptibilidades, pero la realidad es de que pues a mí el grupo solamente me ayudó para conocer a otras mamás que están en la misma necesidad de aprendizaje que yo. Ningún otro, ningún otro tema sobresaliente salió de esto. Y como repito, no quiero eres susceptibilidades, es mi punto de vista. Por eso es de que yo no aporté video a la organización porque no me sentí cómoda haciéndolo. Y pues otra de las cosas que estoy viendo de que aprender plataformas de tecnología, no lo aprendimos. Cómo exponer un tema tampoco. Y desafortunadamente, lo único que veía yo era que la información que se nos daba era leída de un papel. No era expuesta por las personas que hacían las colaboraciones. Entonces ahí sí me sentí yo un poco defraudada a nivel personal. Solamente a nivel personal estoy hablando de mi persona. Y pues lamento mucho tener que decir esto, pero creo que para los años que ya llevamos, ya llevamos de padres líderes aquí en el Valle de Napa que ya llevo yo siete años siendo madre líder y siendo madre voluntaria. Creo que necesitamos una organización muchísimo más fuerte que nos empodere, que nos ayude a pulirnos un poco más para poder seguir liderando y ayudar a nuestros hijos en el mismo camino para que sigan siendo parte activa de nuestra comunidad, de su comunidad, y así poder hacer seguir creciendo como grupo. Les agradezco el tiempo y pues muy buenas noches.
Gracias, señora Mondragón. I just realized that in the boardroom we do not have the translation access. Isidra or Francisco, can one of you translate for the board? I know trustee Gracia was able to access it.
Do you, do you close the interpretation services?
Yes, Dr. Musetti was wondering if we could get a translation.
Can we do it simultaneously? If they go into the interpretation channel, they can choose English and we can interpret simultaneously? Or do you prefer that we do it consecutively?
It's because they're in the boardroom, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're in the boardroom, so that'll cause audio issues with the mic if they go onto the Zoom.
Got it, got it. Okay. Francisco, are you gonna continue this? I'll communicate with Francisco in the background.
Well, yes, she was just saying that she's very thankful for this opportunity as being, you know, the president of the D-LAC. Well, she's, she's not too happy that a lot of things weren't. She didn't really learn much because everything that was covered there was just the red and it didn't really develop the people to have this leadership role enough so that it's a real benefit for the community, especially to help the children, that she wants to have better skills developed through these programs so that they can serve their community better in the future.
Thank you, Francisco.
Welcome.
Mr. Michaels, it looks like, are you there?
Yes, can we see if the mic's wrong in, in the room?
President Jankowitz?
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you now, before. Okay.
Michaels, are there any additional public comment?
Yes, there is. Angelica Chavez, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Ms. Chavez?
I'm sorry. ¿Si me pueden escuchar?
Sí, señora Chavez. Voy a un momento porque quiero la traducción para que... Y si puede parar después de varias horas, una o dos oraciones.
Yo puedo tratar mi inglés a ver si me entiende.
Como usted prefiere.
No, mejor en español. Me siento más cómoda.
Okay, está bien. We're gonna go ahead with consecutive again because again the board members don't have access to the Zoom channel in the boardroom. So can I get?
Yes.
There we go. Okay, here we go. Angelica, para de vez en cuando. If you could put six minutes on, given that we're gonna allow. Say, please, six minutes. Thank you.
Señora Chavez, puede continuar o empezar?
Sí, este primero. Antes que nada, buenas noches a todos y gracias por la invitación para esta reunión. Yo quiero decir que a mí también se me mandó este para que, se me mandó a preguntar para que hiciera un video y no lo hice por la misma razón porque yo se lo comenté hasta el señor Matt que yo iba con otra, con otra expectativa pensando de la, el grupo de líderes. Este, yo pensaba aprender más sobre el programa. Yo llegué a mi Elba, me invitó. Yo no conocía bien el programa.
Okay, esperan. Vamos a traducir.
Okay.
Poco a poco, okay?
Before anything, good evening everyone and thank you so much for your invitation to this meeting. I want to say that I was also extended this invitation right to actually to present a video, but I didn't do it because of the same reason. I even told Mr. Matt that I was, I had another expectation. Thinking of the leadership group, I wanted to learn more about the program. Elba invited me and I didn't know this program really well. Okay, go on, please.
Okay, en este, en este grupo yo les agradezco este que, que me hayan hecho parte del grupo, pero la verdad yo no aprendí nada. Este, todos los veces que yo estuve, yo falté a mi trabajo por tres horas y disentarme y escuchar lo mismo, este, la información que nos daban. La leían las personas que estaban entrenándonos, la leían de papel. Y cuando les hacía yo alguna pregunta, este, ellas decían que no sabían, que iban a investigar, que también estaban aprendiendo sobre el programa. A mí se me, sí me hizo molestar porque yo faltaba mi trabajo, perdía tres horas de trabajo para ir a las reuniones y no, no me sentía que estaba agarrando la capacitación para yo poder aportar en el programa más.
Yes, well, I want to thank you that you made me part of the group, but honestly, I didn't learn anything. All the times, you know, I had to, I had to miss work for three hours just to be sitting there and only having to hear the same thing over and over, right? The information that they would give us, the people that were training us, they would read that from a script. And when I would ask them a question, they would say that they didn't know and that they would investigate because they were also learning about the program. And so that bothered me because I was missing work. I was losing three hours of work to go to the meetings. And I didn't feel like I was being trained well enough in order to be able to, you know, contribute to the program more.
Sí, este, lo único bueno que yo agarre del programa es conocer, conocernos, conocí unas mamás que tienen los mismas metas que yo, este, que nos preocupamos igual por nuestros hijos. Queremos, este, participar, este, ser padres voluntarios, participar más en este tipo de programas especial porque nosotros también, pues no, no hablamos muy bien el inglés y a mí es lo que me llamó el interés involucrarme para poder ayudar familias que están, están, llegan a este país la misma manera que yo llegué, pero la verdad no, yo no sentí ningún tipo de capacitación. Solamente conocernos, hablarnos. Todas las veces llegábamos, este, hablábamos de nosotros mismos, de nuestras familias, cómo nos fue, cómo estuvimos las vacaciones, a dónde fuimos, qué hicimos. Tomar café y tomar break y al final nos decían qué preguntas teníamos. A veces hacíamos, este, nosotros comentábamos como, como decíamos nuestra opinión o dábamos una idea. Y luego yo escuché una, una idea que dio Elizabeth, una compañera. Y después esa idea fue presentada por alguien más diciendo que fue su idea y tampoco lo me gustó.
Okay, so the only thing good that came out of this was getting to know us. I met some moms that have the same goals as myself, that were worried about the same things for our children. We want to participate, we be volunteer parents and participate more in these special programs because, well, we also don't speak English really well. So that's what interested me. First of all, to get involved in order to be able to help other people, families that come to this country in the same way that I got here. Right? But honestly, I didn't feel any kind of training that I got much out of it. We just got to know each other. We would talk all the time. We would come there and we would talk about our families and how things went, how our vacations were, where, what did we do? We would drink coffee. We would take breaks and at the end of the day, they would ask us what questions do you have? And sometimes we would comment. And we would give our opinions or we would give them, you know, our idea. And then I heard, I heard of this idea that Elizabeth, our colleague, you know, gave us. And then that idea was printed by somebody else saying that that was their idea. And I also didn't like that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, do we have any additional public comment?
Muchas gracias por eso. Mr. Michaels, tenemos comentario adicional?
No, we do not. There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. We now move to action items. General Services. One, a discussion and approval of resolution number 2237, authorizing continued use of remote teleconferencing provisions pursuant to AB 361 and Government Code Section 54953.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment for this item.
Can we please get a roll, roll call vote?
Yes, trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Vera. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, did... I apologize. Vera, I'm so sorry.
Trustee González Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Adoption of California School Board, CSBA recommended March 2022 policy updates.
Move to approve?
First by trustee Gracia. Second. Second by trustee Riser. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Adoption of Board Policy Administrative Regulation 5116.1, inter-district open enrollment.
Move to approve?
First by trustee Riser, second trustee Gracia. Do I have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Under Business Services, Resolution 22-27, inter-fund borrowing.
Move to approve?
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Vera, do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Vera, may I please have a roll call vote?
Yes, trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee González Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charter School Facilities Use Agreement between Stonebridge School and Napa Valley Unified School District. Trustee Riser, second by trustee Gracia. Do I have any public comment, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Human Resources. Request to hire educator less than fully credentialed for school year 2022-23.
Move to approve?
By trustee Riser, second by trustee Gracia. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Proposed NAPS and VUSD collective bargaining agreement effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Move to approve?
Move to approve. First by trustee Riser.
Second.
Second by trustee Gracia. Do I have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Welcome back. Right on the, on your left hand side.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Evening again, President Jankowitz, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Musetti and assembled NVUSD community members. Just briefly, I want to say thank you on behalf of the NAPS board that worked with HR to negotiate our contract. And once again, grateful to represent and have the trust of the speech-language pathologists, the psychologists, and social workers, and the behaviorists who make up our bargaining unit. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
President Walter, I just want to thank you for, for your leadership. As the president of NAPS, it's an extraordinary amount of work, particularly in a negotiation year like this. And it was during a very difficult time. And I know there was a lot of pressure to provide support services on your unit. So despite all of that, you were able to accomplish this. And I just want to thank you for your leadership in the presidency of NAPS. Thank you so much. It's an honor and a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Musetti. The feelings are mutual. All right. Good evening. Thank you so very much, Dr. Musetti. The feelings are mutual. All right. Good evening.
Good evening. I feel like we should clap. We move on to instructional, I'm sorry. May I get a motion?
Move.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. We have no more public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Instructional Services, Renewal of migrant Education Regional Application 2022-23 and Program Implementation.
Move to approve?
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Any public comment on this item, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agreement between Artful Learning and Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved.
First by trustee Water, second by, by trustee Riser. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Renewal MOU for School Resource Officers between the City of Napa and Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved.
By trustee Water, second by trustee Gracia. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. School Plan for Student Achievement Addendum, McPherson Elementary School.
Move to approve?
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Any public comment, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. 2022-2023 Napa Valley Adult Education Classified Employee Calendars.
Move to approve?
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Gracia. Any public comment, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Operational Services, Request to Purchase Transit Ban for Food Service Department.
So moved.
By trustee Water, second by trustee Gracia. Do I have any public comment, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We move on to informational. Under General Services, there are minutes attached to the Curriculum and Student Support Committee, and there are minutes attached to Facilities and Technology. Finance and Policy Committees have not yet met. Under Instructional Services, Chronic Absenteeism Report for Month Nine. Any comment? Okay.
The numbers aren't great, but they're, in fact, they're terrible. And, but it looks as if I like the gain-loss and then the little legend, negative numbers are good. And I do see some negative numbers there. And, you know, I'm surprised at some of these schools that have particularly engaged parents, they too have pretty high absentee rates. It's a, yeah.
Okay. Additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent? Anything out there? Future agenda items? Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry, President Jankowitz. I just, I do want to thank everybody for, I know it's the end of the meeting, but I do want to go on record. I do, I do want to thank everybody who was able to attend in person and online in 2022 State of the District. We had a, a great showing. Approximately 150 people at the Napa High Gym. And at our peak, we had approximately 150 people online. So, yeah, I'm just grateful for that.
Thank you. Future agenda items, team. Lastly, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
So many at the same time. So first by everyone, second by everyone. We are now adjourned. First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Gonzalez Morris. And good evening. And all in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Good night, everyone.